You should be awesome.
Welcome, everybody, to the February 8, 2022, meeting of the Board of Education. I have a motion to return to public session. Alec first, and then second, we are back in public. We have approval of minutes, you have January 11th, they have a motion. Alec first, Jennifer second, all in favor. Marihita?
Aye.
Thank you. We are unanimous. Approval of treasurer's report, we have a motion. Julia first, Marihita second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Unanimous. And now we come to recognition of community and public comments. We will add public comment at number three today. Victoria, would you like to take one and two?
Right, yes, I would actually like to, as Kyle is number one, and then, yep, Jen Allen will speak to number two.
Hello, everyone. It is my pleasure to acknowledge a number of Edgemont students who were recently recognized in the 2022 Great Sophia's Elastic Writing Competition. Gold key recognition was earned by Dylan Buxer Schultz, Paulina Companala, Ava Min, Jewel Sailor, and Avanta Singh. Silver keys were earned by Dylan Buxer Schultz, Tyler Buxer Schultz, Emily Cow, Ava Min, and Zara Zaduki. And finally, honorable mention, so learned by Bernardo Amaris, Brooke Phalas, Heather Buxer Schultz, Beniva Dembella, Rachel Vincent, David Khan, Serena Key, Daniel Kim, Rania Mallett, April Middleton, Kaden Min, Jewel Sailor, Yufa Shaw, Michelle Chao, Avanta Singh, Derek Sun, and Nayab Lali. Congratulations to each of our students in our English department. Thank you.
Good question, though I presume you can vote for many different categories?
Yes, in multiple submissions, we're in a couple different categories.
Yes, Jennifer Allen?
Good evening, everybody. The Friends of Odell House, Washington Bowl headquarters, is a community group that has been working with the town to secure funding to renovate Odell House, a revolutionary era house on Fifth Row. The French general Richard Moll is headlining the building. The OHRH is working on converting the house into a museum, which is very exciting. Richard Moll met at Odell House, the George Washington, to plan the Battle of Yorktown, which ended the Revolutionary War. At that time, there were thousands of soldiers encanting around the area that is now Sunnyvale Country Home, a location that was rich in providing artifacts from the Revolutionary Era. A few weeks ago, a former Greenville and now VHS parent, Vanessa Pasqua, contacted the principals on behalf of the Friends of Odell House, Richard Moll headquarters, but it's his amendment. On the group's behalf, Vanessa offered the school and the new school's a mini museum display installation with artifacts found at Sunnyvale Country Home of Odell House, as well as period pieces that we have found in these locations. The group offered us large regional maps that show the true encampments in our area, as well as an abundance of support material for our teachers to use. We instructed the students of their exam results. In addition to the individual teachers sharing this material with their students, knowing the GoMES, the teaching unit at Odell House, and its significance to our older elementary students, it's part of July Day program. As a former history teacher and lover of history, I was incredibly excited about the opportunity to house these artifacts of Greenville, and help students connect with and learn about history and its meaning, which are filled with national and historic importance. We passed by just with different letters and support of OHRH grant process, and have spoken with them about the traditional ways that we would integrate their expertise and collection of artifacts into our schools and our programs. And eventually, once the renovation is completed, plan to visit Odell House and integrate the OHRH work into our social studies program. We hope to expand the relationship between the district and Odell House, as well as other local organizations, and our effort to build community relationships and teach our students about the significance of this area. We would like to extend our thanks to Vanessa Pasqua and other members of the OHRH. Well, welcome to the conference. Yeah, we'll be installing the lobby to watch.
Any questions, sir?
I don't have a question. Any general comments for anyone else who speaks? I apparently, Jen, we're difficult here, so anyone else who speaks, they best under advisement.
Okay, we have, I know we have at least one public comment.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Um, so I found, you can go first and. Okay, please, please state your name slowly, spell it for our transcriber, and make sure you speak into the mic if you could, please.
Sure.
And I will, sorry, my apologies about interrupting. There is a three-minute limit.
Sure. So my name is Eva Lehman. I am a mother of two children that through a place and a graduate of a high school in 1995. And so I remember this room being like a wood tech room, not what I was here. But I'd like to start by thanking the board for your thoughtful approach to keep the Edgemont School open for in-person learning while maintaining the safety of the students, faculty, and staff. And here representing a number of concerned parents to advocate for the local continuation of the mandate that all staff and students wear masks at school irrespective of future New York State rulings about whether the state has authority to mandate wearing masks in school. We appreciate the policies set by the Edgemont Board of Education back in September 2020, long before Governor Hillgo announced the statewide mandate in mid-December 2020. And we'd like to see that these local policies preserve despite the statewide issue or lack of a mandate. We are not suggesting that we should blindly continue to wear the masks, but rather that this is not the kind of rule of thumb. Instead, consistent with the pragmatic policies adopted by the Edgemont Board of Ed today, we would best of Board of Ed set forth a set of conservative parameters informed by CBT guidelines, New York State Department of Health guidelines, science-based expert opinions, and public discussion, to determine a timetable for reduced masking requirements based on data such as local case rates, positivity rates, rate of transmission, and other factors. We understand that these are just guidelines, and we may continue to change based on the event's made of margin science and history. To that end, we have submitted for the board to review, but the letter stating our concerns, as well as a supporting document, a sentence of signatures of others that were in support of this decision. And we appreciate your attention to this matter and its great.
Thank you very much. I gather there's another member of the public, please come up.
I'm Dr. Paul Faduza, also a parent of two Sealy Place students. I've been treating COVID-19 patients in New York City in person since March of last year. I'm also coming here to speak about mask mandates in schools. And I actually agree with just about everything that I just heard, in that mask mandates should be based on local data, that mask mandate shouldn't be continued indefinitely, that masks obviously provide tremendous benefit. But with community cases are low, there's nothing to prevent, and so we're left only with harms. I would inject, I think, maybe a little bit more urgency in that I do think that over a year of our students not seeing the teacher's faces, not learning the social and emotional cues that come with having a normal, human, in-person interaction, I think that I would probably convey more of an urgency to take off the masks, more of a recognition that all medical interventions have benefits and harms, the harms to these masks have been real, probably are cumulative, probably are worse with longer exposures. We've probably missed the tremendous opportunity to have masks off when periods of low transmission. And that was, I think, early on in the pandemic, it was appropriate to exercise more caution. I think as time moves on, we gain knowledge, we get into that scenes, we were blessed with a weaker theory. It's time to be a little bit more, it's time to recognize that COVID is not the only harm facing our children, and to be aware that our interventions, especially when their benefits are minimal instead of small, community spread, were left only with harm. I would suggest, for example, that the timetable that these masks are said to expire, which is in a couple of weeks, will almost certainly correspond with a time of negligible COVID. This particular spike has gone up incredibly quickly and it's going down tremendously quickly. We can't predict the future, but assuming that this continues, we will find ourselves in a position of very little hope. And if February 18th comes, and then there's another three months of debate about what are the right parameters, we will spend three months of evidence where masks to prevent COVID. So I think there's a little more urgency is all of that. Thank you.
Thank, thank you both. I'm going to limit my comments at this point to say that we are about to have a discussion on the subject in two more points down the agenda, so if you can just hang tight, it would be great to have you stay for a little bit. Victoria, we next have acceptance of gifts.
I'd like to ask for words approval of a donation by the Edgemont Rotary Club of 700 children's face masks for Sealy Place and Greenville School, requested to be used for K-6 students. And also, I'd also like to ask the board to accept a generous donation from the PTSA, $4,000 for, for, sorry, the PTA. I don't know if I'm seeing that amount. Do you see that, the $4,000?
Yeah, $4,000.
For, for the PTSA, for Edgemont Junior Senior High School Additional Bus for the UNG Jazz Festival, but I wasn't seeing as the amount for the PTA for indoor recess games. Oh, sorry, there was none. To thank the PTA for the indoor recess games activities and supplies for Greenville School.
Do I have a motion? Alec first, Marihita second, all in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and thank you for the donations.
Next, we move on to the superintendent's report.
Yes, I would like to begin with a brief health and safety update on what has changed since the last health and safety update. And just wanted to remind everyone that our goal is to keep schools open for in-person instruction and to do so safely as we can. So with that said, I wanted to just give a little bit of a mask update. And that is masks are still required in schools, and they will be required until at least February 21st at this point. It's pending the Department of Health Action and Legal Response, however, masks may be required through March 2nd. So there's two different timelines going on right now, and it is dependent upon the legal action. Requirements beyond that date are unknown, unknown whether the Department of Health will still have the authority, whether there will be executive authority to mandate masks or not. So that said, as of now, as was mentioned, we expect that masking may be going away. We just don't know exactly when. So of course, if masking is going away, there are a number of considerations to take into concern. There are some of our students who have never attended school without masks, right? There are just a number of social, emotional concerns, health concerns that have to be taken into, into our own concerns as we think about how we want to prepare for that, if that does happen in schools. And especially the respect for choice, respect for choice by students, by their families, and by faculty and staff. So in order to prepare for a transition or for what removing masks could look like, we are meeting with building-level administrators to talk about that, to talk about concerns at the building level and what we have to make sure we're taking into consideration. Also, meetings with faculty, staff, and of course, students to just prepare for, start talking about, so it doesn't feel like it comes from out of the blue if and when that happens. Also, we have a meeting scheduled with the leadership from the PTA and PTSA to discuss support and information for parents and guardians. At a recent stakeholder group meeting, there are a number of physicians on the call, and they offered to be available. Parents had questions, maybe still questions about vaccinations, questions about transmission, questions about removing masks, that they would be available to talk to parents. So I will be meeting with the PTA, PTSA leadership to discuss those possibilities. And I think also it's important to monitor and to be aware of how students are feeling if they're taking off their mask, and certainly to make sure that no one is meant to feel badly for a family decision to keep a mask on or to remove a mask. So I believe there are a number of considerations that, thank you, admin team, we will all be discussing. Just a quick update on isolation requirements regardless of vaccination status. This is the same, this has not changed since my last update. Just wanted to remind everyone that if your child tests positive, it is the responsibility of the parent to isolate, to have your child isolate for at least five days regardless of vaccination status. And also, for students who are not vaccinated, we have employed our test to stay. And, sorry, I jumped ahead, let me stick with, stick with quarantining. So one thing that did change as of the end of last week, we seem to be in a pattern of getting Friday afternoon memos. And this was one of them. So you may remember when we talked about tests to stay, that it's a child who was required to quarantine could come back to school after five days if they tested and if they were fully masked. But they just said in school, and it didn't include any extracurricular activities. So now we did receive an update, and the chart is attached, the vaccination status, that you can participate in extracurricular if it's at school. So you can come to athletic practices, you can come to robotics practice, you can come to chess club practice. However, if you are competing against another school district, you may not participate. So I, we're just keeping students to identify, I guess, the way we're considering a school day is anything that happens here, but any inter-district competition would not be included until the child reaches the end of the full 10-day quarantine. Five-day for test to stay, right?
Five regardless of vaccination status.
Five-day to return to interscholastic sports? Okay. That, can we just check that chart?
Can't imagine why.
Wait, we, we do this a lot, in terms of, was it, because it says right here. No, for the, for the inter, oh, for the sports. Oh, no, no, I'm on, I know they can come to practice. I'm on, when can they participate?
So criteria we're looking at is quarantine duration for not fully vaccinated.
Right.
Right. So the, for ages 12 to adult, not fully vaccinated, duration is five days. So once they get through the five-day period, regardless of test to stay or not, they've moved into their, they're out of quarantine and out of isolation. So their involvement in the test to stay program doesn't change the date upon which they would be released from their quarantine and then effectively be able to participate in all of their activities.
Except interscholastic. It says no extracurriculars that involve other schools, right?
Right.
So they could stay, right? So they could have, they could participate in the practices or anything on campus.
Correct.
Edge One.
Correct.
So this, this, this presentation will move from the admin side to the public side right at the end of the meeting. And within the presentation, you can access the link, but I believe this will also end up on the superintendent's kind of like updates to COVID page.
Correct. Yes, yes, we will make sure it's in the summary, and yes, for anyone who also needs to keep referring to the chart. Yes, thank you. Thank you.
Reading, just even reading across the top, fully vaccinated, not yet fully vaccinated, fully vaccinated and boosted, fully vaccinated, not yet eligible for booster, fully vaccinated eligible for booster, but not yet boosted.
I'm glad, I'm glad to understand why I had to go back.
And Mike, I would say unfortunately, as we laugh about the complexity of this, this is about the clearest that we've seen it. Yet, this actually provides some, you can map, right? Where does the student or adult fall? What are we looking to read? And it actually does provide as, about as clearly we've seen it so far. And that, that's the reality, and it may, I'm sure it'll continue to evolve.
And do we have any, do we have anybody currently in the test to stay program? So, right, as of January 23rd, we actually have three students and seven adults who qualified for test to stay. And they were unvaccinated close contacts, and they, they did participate.
Yeah, it's been, there have not been, maybe not surprisingly, given the transmission rates currently, and I think kind of two factors for us. The fact that there have not been many people participating in it is an indication that we do have a high vaccination rate, as it's only for those that are unvaccinated who are eligible for that. Today, this week, we haven't had any additional people eligible for, and we hope that nobody becomes eligible, because it means there are no additional contacts going forward.
The great news is, as of today, we had one employee who was out for COVID-related reasons compared to 22 a month ago. And thank you to this wonderful admin team who's in the room who made it through and covered classes and kept schools open through that surge. So we're really appreciative for that. So. So we open to board questions.
Does anyone have, Jennifer?
I just wanted to say thank you for the attention you're paying to now for this issue, because whether it's been during the first or something, or if something, yes, they're going to come off. But as we know, different people have different challenges, and those seventeen-year-olds can be prepared and understand what's going on, what the choices are. Students can be reminded to respect the choices that are here. The time to do that work is now, it's on the web, like the, that we need to do it.
Thank you. Nalash?
So, Victoria, I'm very happy that we are actually now beginning to change the discourse. My plea to the community, it's not about pitching, I have a further mask, I have a mask, I think that's not the issue. The issue is that the mask will go at some point in time. The whole discourse has to change, what should the community do in totality to make everything, the whole community a safer place when the masks go away? And I like the fact that it's, it's a choice about, you know, advocating among your friends, among your community, are you kind of vaccinated, are you boosted? Because we want to have everybody safe. So rather than saying I'm against a mask, a pro-mask, you could actually check with your friends and neighbors, that people you know and actually allocate for a much safer choices to wear or exercise. Because the masks go away, and they should be protected. And I think similarly, from our school perspective, we should figure out who the kids at each grade and each class level, you know, who are vulnerable because of some family members. They'll have much younger siblings at home or have very older parents at home to figure out who are the one who actually need more safety issues once the mask go. So we can create a setup which makes them feel safe to come to the school, because it's an emotional issue for those kids. So I think the whole discourse has to go away to a normalcy situation when we can handle without taking any undue safety risk for the whole community. And I think that's the way, I would love to keep hearing more thoughts, so this is a great start, and I'm very delighted to see these kind of steps come in. And we should keep moving in that direction and let everybody feel safer.
Yeah, I agree with everything that's said, now is the time to do it. I think, as second speaker said, I agree with those things the first speaker said. And I think we're right, we all want, we all would love to have everybody be able to take their masks off and see those smiling faces while we make sure everybody's safe. I think fundamental issues always trade-offs, so it's like, what, you know, what harm is being done versus what might be done when you take it off? And there's never a way to know that completely, and there's never a way to weigh that. What is emotional harm that's being done to children, nothing masks versus if a child gets really sick, then I should, you can't weigh those two things. So at a certain point, right, we will take them off, and those risks will come. So how do we prepare people to make their decisions? How do we try to make people as safe as we possibly can for the changes that will come? Timing, no, nobody's going to be completely happy with that. So whenever it happens, some are going to want it longer, some will have wanted it sooner, and that's the way, but we know that, right? The administration's been tremendous work there, trying to find the best path.
Any other comments?
Yeah, I just have a quick comment, oh, go ahead, do I, do you? I just, I just wanted to clarify, so Victoria, are you recommending that when the mandate goes away, that we move to mask optional?
Oh, I'm not recommending anything medical.
Okay.
Yeah, no, I'm not recommending anything medical.
Okay, so, so there is something in front of us, I think, which is the question of, you know, if that happens while we're on, all on break, and if that happens one, three days after break, what our policy is going to be? And I think that question is in front of us right now as opposed to in front of us when that happens. So I guess I have two concerns. One is that DOH is not going to give us metrics. I feel fairly confident that we're not going to see confirmed metrics. I also believe that the studies of single masks versus double masks, like all those studies are not going to give us full information. I also know that we have pretty good tracking information about our town, and I also know that I am not going to become a medical expert in the next, in the next three weeks. So, and I also know that, you know, that every person cannot be a medical expert in this scenario. So it's going to be impossible to get an absolute view of the trade-offs in both directions. And so, but I think it's really important for, and so just to give you a second view, which is that I have been asking, and it's mostly that this junior senior or high school level, I have been asking every group of kids, I come in contact with, what would happen if we went to mask optional? And it's been very interesting to hear the reactions, almost every child I've spoken to has said they would absolutely still wear their mask, are you kidding? So we think that, you know, one of the questions is, what does going mask optional mean in terms of what would happen in the school the next day? What does that mask optional mean in terms of, you know, starting to give kids agency for how they want to make decisions and how families want to make decisions? But I actually do believe we should come to some sort of, you know, some sort of decision, if not tonight, then certainly being able to propose something at our next board meeting next week to really make sure that when the change happens, we're not in a place where people are confused. Because what I would hate to have happen is that people come back for break on Sunday, February, or Monday, February, don't come back on Sunday, on Monday, February 28th, and there are some people that believe that they don't need to wear their masks anymore, and then we end up in the school with confusion about what is and isn't required.
Nalash?
I mean, I just want, I wanted to echo what she was saying, part, I want to remind everyone that I don't think anyone here is an orthopedic, I don't think anyone thinks of the MBN board or the administration. And so, and this is a highly emotional decision, I think, for many, many people in the community, and it's a test of patience with, where we go with it, because we're all kind of pulling our weight. And the other thing I would say to keep this point is. And the other thing I would say to keep this point is, is to, in, in the original announcement that we made, that, that we made. About masking and mask optional, there was a session that there, that there might need to be some time from the time that we. Hear what the legal decision is to actually, you know, implement it in schools. And so when we talk about there being a possibility that there could be a change coming out of the break. You know, I, I can, I could foresee there being a need to be able to have discussions with the faculty, staff and students, especially. About how this works and how we respect their decisions and I just wanted to remind people of that as well.
Yes, I just also want to add to the point that Mariki raised about this whole vacation thing. So vacation can create a bump and I just want that the transition, whenever it happens, happens with some days of lag. It could be two days, it could be five days, because end of the day, the communication piece and making students prepare. To emotionally handle that is as important an issue as the health is, so. I just want to make sure that, you know, the way I look at it, you know, this is seriously test all your three divisions. It will test your social, emotional learning of how the people handle it. It will test your D I, because how kids treat each other and whether it's very kind of, you know, kind of. Some kind of difference is happening between the students, so it's a test of that and it's a test of connecting your learning to life. So I think it has to be a real test of all your capabilities, so. And I just wanted that even though the date might be the first day after the break, I think we take three days, four days, five days for the whole communication.
Alex. Yes, two things, I'll just reinforce what you said there. There is no requirement for us, just because they mess, take mess off might be allowed by the state with certain. They, they could, there's no requirement that we on the following day make that options. Local school districts still have the ability to set, unless a rule came down and said you can't. Regarding everything I've said, they said local school districts will still have the ability to. Their policies play, so while again, we wouldn't want to just blindly continue it in there, but yes, I think. If, if it were to come out two days from now and we haven't had a chance to do all the things we're talking about, then we wouldn't just instantly, you know, say no masks. The other thing, just on the, the medical expert side, yes, we have tremendous number of. People in our community who have tremendous expertise in this area and there's not consensus among them. We've got many emails from the board, some of them saying, well, all my doctor friends, we agree this. Another one's saying, well, we agree this, so there is, again, there may be agreement on certain facts. But the conclusions that come from those facts are not unanimous by any stretch of imagination.
Yeah, I agree with what you were saying, Alan, there is a difference between mask optional at the state level versus our school policy. Right now, our school policy says we're wearing masks. And obviously, administration is looking at how that looks and we don't want to miss below transmission window. But we can't set the metrics for when masks are on and off because we aren't medical experts. And hopefully the CDC will be giving us some more guidelines and as we hear from state and the, the Department of Health. We can hopefully make some decisions that are good and set the policies that are good for everybody in our district. But I don't think it's got to be a great rush that we're making a impulsive decision that isn't in the best interest of the schools and students and teachers. Go ahead.
I just wanted to let people know, I was on the call today where it was being very clear that. Schools want metrics from the governor. Whether she or the Department of Health actually deliver it, whether they is another question, but, but. Very strong message was sent that. Schools are not doctors, we're not medical experts, we're not public health experts, they don't know. And so perhaps the people who are, could give us a little bit of advice. So Mariki, like you said, it's not coming, but fingers crossed, maybe it is.
So if, if I'd like to just follow up on that a little bit and add a couple of points. But following that meeting, there was an article that was posted in the, I think, the low hood.com. And it, it basically said, now, this is not the governor saying it, it's saying, it's assessment of what the governor said. Is that she seems to be shying away fairly strongly from issuing any metrics whatsoever. I am not quoting her, I am simply sharing what the assessment was of, of people who are on that call. I, I would like to add to all the points that have been made and I really want to thank this board, everybody. For sharing all the differing perspectives and approaches and understanding of the situation. Because I think it enormously, it, it goes a long way to helping to clarify the situation for those at least who are listening to this meeting. It would be great if we as a district could go to our students and say, are you vaccinated? But we don't have that authority, so that's why we are asking all of you who happen to be listening. To push that to the extent reasonable that you feel comfortable. Because the more students who are vaccinated, if, if in fact the governor does use a metric. That has been the one most frequently quoted in the press in the last week, that she is looking to see an increase in the number of childhood vaccinations. Secondly, I would emphasize a point that a couple of others have alluded to or maybe even made, but is worth emphasizing. After a break, when people go away, there tends to be a, a bump in any kind of illnesses. And this has pre-COVID. And so I, I would, I would strongly suggest that it is unlikely that this board will move to go mask optional. Or that the district would ask to go mask optional anytime less than about a week, a week after we get back from break. That would be, to my personal view, the minimum amount of time that we would need to feel comfortable that we have gotten over that bump. Now, I am speaking for myself personally, not the entire board here, that is how I see the situation. And then lastly, as to us not being medical experts, absolutely true. But I will also say that we all do an enormous amount of reading of, of all kinds of journals and. Medical information so that we can do our best to be as informed as reasonably possible on the subject. None of us is experts, but we really all do make a point of reading and a broad variety of sources. So that we are aware of, of what concerns and static statistics and how people are thinking. There is, I don't want to, I don't want to repeat anything more than others have said, those are the key points that I really wanted to emphasize. Alan, you had some.
Yeah, so a couple more quick things, so one, also on that call. No matter what the governor does, she is getting tremendous pressure from everyone to give warrant, to not just drop it on people overnight. Everyone expressing that, right, everyone wants to do this thoughtfully whenever it happens and they need time to prepare. And yes, we can start preparing, but. They very clearly don't want her to just suddenly say, ah, tomorrow, two days, you're now, it's there now. No guarantees, but I think it's likely she'll try and give a decent amount of warning. And the other thing, in terms of setting expectations, we hope it never happens, but I think we just have to understand that. When that day comes and we have lifted the mask mandate, there's no guarantee that that's the end forever. Right, if another variant came out, the transmission spiked, we might have to pull back for a period of time. So we hope that wouldn't happen, but you just have to understand it might not be end of masks forever.
Can I, can I just jump in with two things? So, so I agree, Alec, with that in, in theory, although I think one of the questions, and this is again, you know, just to be played out, right? Which is that if the result of, if we are shifting to dealing with this as an endemic over the long term. You know, certainly we could, as a, as a community and maybe as a country, decide that masks are now part of, of living even with it as an endemic, for sure. I don't know that I necessarily am ready to make that decision, but, but, but I get where that, where that is coming from. I think Judy, to your point, I absolutely think that in the absence of strong medical data. And in the absence of, you know, of really, you know, and, and honestly, to kind of. Reduce theater, because I don't think anybody wants theater. I think using common sense tools to make decisions is really important. And what you just said about waiting for a week after, after the holidays or after the, the week off is a real common sense tool to use to determine timelines. And so I think, you know, if we can start to talk in the, in the, in the terminology of common sense. And not necessarily waiting for these scientific studies which are not going to come. And which I honestly, maybe I'm exposing myself a little bit, I think they focus a lot more on, on the. Easily to track health benefits and health challenges than they do on the harder to track social, social and emotional issues. And I think we just have to, we have to kind of balance that a little bit more than they are. And because those studies are even harder to do and they're not going to do those studies for a really long time. So, you know, I'm, I really think that, you know, if we can decide to make some real common sense decisions about this. And, and, and put some stakes in the ground, I think, you know, community members can start to understand what's driving it. And again, I don't know that the, the first day that masks are optional, we're going to see a whole bunch of kids come to school without masks on. I think, you know, I think what we're going to see is a gradual reduction in mask usage. And it might be that's faster in the elementary schools because honestly, they need, the kids need it there more and that's fine too. So I think, you know, I just think that we need to use those common sense kind of measures. As opposed to trying to wait for, you know, some real strong data to, to drive decisions. Because I just don't think it's going to come, and if it comes, I think it's going to be biased again, on, on, on physical health. Which, you know, if you think about this current variant, while not universal. People's experiences have been actually, in many, vaccinated people's experience have been less than the average flu experience, so.
Any, any further comments, any questions from anybody in our live audience? We will move on, Victoria, please. Oh, thank you.
No problem.
No problem, okay. All right. You're up to your budget discussion?
Great, so, yeah. So actually, just, can I just interrupt for one second? Um, do we have a next step on this or?
So, so, so the next steps are for us, for the administrators to meet, meet with the faculty, staff, students. And to start just talking about the possibility of a mask being removed and, and gathering the concerns. And gathering the issues that need to be discussed and be part of that transition plan. But I, I will follow the board's lead on anything other, other than that, if the requirement goes away. But it would be following. The, the plan to be ready for a transition.
I think as Malas pointed out, as, as he pointed out, getting a clear sense from those students who might have greater issues.
Correct.
I don't know how we make a push to reach out to them specifically, but maybe you all can, can be instrumental in, in helping with that.
Yeah, I think the, the building administrators, all, all of the phone calls that they have been making, all of the contact tracing. I think they know way more about every family and every issue than they ever wanted to know. And certainly, yeah, we'll, we'll include that as well in that, what that transition could look like.
Thank you.
So will this be on our agenda next week as well?
We can add the update, yes, to, to next week.
Okay, thanks.
Great, so ready to move on to budget discussion? So tonight, we're going to be discussing enrollment, staffing and section number projections. And we're so grateful that everyone is here, we will be tag teaming a good part of this presentation and I'd like to turn it over to Brian.
Thanks, Victoria, hi, everyone. You know, again, another kind of milestone for us in this process as we've been starting really back in December to outline. What the budget process and development looks like in the school, to get us to a point where we can make an administrative proposal of our budget and, and seek board. Adoption of, of that proposal. Tonight's really important in that staffing is, is obviously really critical to our needs here. But it also just represents such a significant part of the budget that in, in reality, what we'll speak about tonight on the whole. Makes up, you know, almost 80% between 75 and 80% of our total budget every single year. Just to outline, you know, what are the essential questions that we want to address tonight is to, one, look at enrollment trends in the district. Which I think are really important because it's going to ultimately base, be based on our students' needs. To take a look at what the staffing needs are as a result of enrollment and then to also discuss what additional positions is the district proposing tonight? For inclusion in the budget for next year to support our students and, and the programs that we do offer here. So what you see on this slide is our, our current district enrollment projection and the key word there is projection. I'm going to highlight a group right now, the, the part that's in that box that I just created, 2021 is actually the current year. So that's our, our enrollment this year, 1,972 as of beds day. Which was determined in October, a date at which we take a snapshot of the district so that there is a consistent comparison year over year. Because we know enrollment changes by the day within the district. If you look prior to that, those are all actual figures, so that's our data going back to the 2012, 2013 school year up through our current date. And I think, you know, one of the things that we talked about in great detail last year and over the last few years, as we've been talking about our capital projects. And the bond and construction and need for space is that we have seen, if you go back even further. A, a fairly significant rise in our enrollment over a 10 or 15 year period. What's really notable here to me is when you look at 2017 up through last year, it looks like we hit a, a local maximum. Where we saw a fairly significant bump above those mid 1900s until we saw four consecutive years with enrollment over 2,000 in the district. And like this year, we saw that dissipate a little bit. The projections that we see going forward, 2022, which is next year, and then moving after that are based off of two different things. So it's a cohort survival analysis, which tracks the trends that we see year over year from one grade to the next. So if 120 students come in in kindergarten, what typically happens in kindergarten to first grade? And then first grade to second grade, based on longitudinal data. And then the second piece of that is we try to get projections for kindergarten, which are hard to do. Based off of a ratio of the live births in our geographic area to the actual kindergarten enrollment. Our ratio is a little funny because we tend to have a lot of births that occur outside of Edgemont. And then yet families move in prior to kindergarten and so the enrollment is much higher than what those births were five years prior to that. Those two things, and, and we, we have some software that, and consultants that we partner with on this to kind of help us generate this plan. And so I think as I started with, these are projections, they're not hard facts, it's going to be ever evolving. We have a tremendous number of students who move into the district each year. We have students who leave the district each year and move on to private schools and parochial schools. But this gives us a good snapshot of kind of where we are today. And we're going to use the data here today to really outline the first part of enrollment in section numbers. And that's just establishing a, a working budget that gives us the flexibility to deal with the fluctuations that we will see. Over the next six months before we actually open school for the calendar year. The changes and the specificity with which you'll hear our building leaders to talk about tonight is based off of the budget. It's not, we're definitely creating this many sections in each one, these are projections based off of where we stand today. And, and it gives us that ability to kind of forecast, what is the funding sources necessary to, to support that? So we're going to take this, you know, one school at a time, and so I'm going to introduce Ms. Julia Wong to come on up. The assistant principal at Sealy Place to talk about their enrollment projections for next year.
Thank you, Brian, good evening. During 2022, 2023 school year, we anticipate that we will remain consistent with 23 sections of Sealy Place. We expect to have four sections at grades five and six and three sections in grades. We expect to have four sections at grades five and six and three sections in grades K one, two, three, and four. We do not seem to have any grades that are close to breaking into an additional section, so we believe these section numbers could be reliable. Although three or four sections is what has been a typical number of sections of Sealy Place, you can see that as of late, we are remaining steady with three sections per grade. At this time, kindergarten enrollment remains an unknown. While we are continuing to enroll kindergarten students for next year, our numbers at this point in February are about what they have been for the past few years. So at this time, we are preparing for three sections. We continue to enjoy meeting new families and registering new students. And with the use of Google Meet, we continue to connect with families who are moving from across the country as they ask us questions about our school and our district. It has been a wonderful way to make new connections. And whenever we ask them, why have you chosen Edgemont, we often hear family as well as the reputation of our school district, our school community that is on the living room. Now, in regards to staffing, it is projected that our number of administrators, teacher aides, clerical staff, and psychologists will remain the same next year. And we are, however, projecting an increase of point five teachers for the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three school year. This will bring us from forty-two point seven five teachers to forty-three point two five teachers. Please note that the numbers are not tall because of the school's shared faculty. This increase will become necessary based on recommendations that we need this spring during the annual review process for student evaluation. That's it for Sealy, and now I will turn it over to Mary Sichara to discuss Greenville enrollment and staffing.
And as Marie's is getting settled in, I should have said one thing before, just to make sure everybody understands, we'll often refer to FTE tonight. FTE means full-time equivalent. It it's a better way for us to calculate our actual staffing by determining what a full-time job is and then relating each position to that job. Somebody who's full-time would be considered one point O. Somebody who was part-time would say that they were four out of five days or four fifths of the time would be declared point eight. And then we have some individuals who have worked beyond what would be considered full-time, and they might be determined as a one point two, for example. So the fact that we see a forty-two point seven five or forty-three and a quarter both speaks to the fact that we have shared staff, so that quarter might be split across. But it also might mean that they have either a reduced load or a load above what would be considered full-time as we factor them in here.
Thank you, Brian. Thank you, Julia. Good evening. It's been a genuine pleasure working with all of our students this year as a person. As we've seen so many times before, our students and staff are remarkably resilient and have made the necessary adjustments to maximize learning and growth during what continued to be challenging times. Despite these challenges, our students and staff have forged new and strong relationships and are all benefiting from being together as a school community. As we plan for next year, we are excited about welcoming our returning and new students to our campus and moving forward together. In looking at Greenville's projected enrollment for the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three school year, there are some unknowns, as there always are. But like Sealy, we are able to make solid projections looking at current enrollment and trends over the past few years. During the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three school year, we anticipate that we will have at least thirty sections at Greenville. Based on current enrollment and enrollment trends, we are confident that we will have four sections each at grades one, two, three, and four, and two I cap homerooms. As Brian indicated, the enrollment totals are projected and not actual numbers. As such, we are monitoring enrollment at grades five and six to determine how many homerooms we will need in the next school year. At this point in the process, kindergarten is an unknown. But based on our enrollment to date, um, there would be no fewer than three sections of kindergarten and potentially four. With regard to staffing, we project that our number of administrators, clerical staff, and psychologists will remain the same next year. However, we are projecting a point five increase in special education teachers for the next school year as annual reviews and new student enrollment enrollment may necessitate this increase. This will bring us from forty-nine point two five teachers to forty-nine point seven five teachers. Again, these are not full numbers because of our shared staff. We are projecting a one point five increase in teacher aides next year, which will bring us from forty-four teacher aides this year to forty-five point five teacher aides for the next school year. This, too, is a result of the annual review process. Now, I'm going to turn it over to Mary Ruth Joseph to discuss enrollment depth for junior seniors.
Just one question behind my thoughts, if you set it minutes, and how does the um section total thirty compare to what you referred to this year?
We currently have thirty this year, so we anticipate a meaningful.
Thank you, Mary. Brian, thank you for clarifying FTEs because I'm going to speak FTE language tonight. So it's a pleasure to be speaking with all of you tonight. I'll be discussing the enrollments and projections next year for Edgemont Elementary High School. As we plan for next year, it's important to know that we make a schedule every year with the data that we have at hand. These numbers include student population, teacher recommendations, and student course requests. However, these numbers don't stay the same. They are in flux, as as Brian kind of mentioned. For example, this year alone, after the schedule was finalized, we had forty-seven student enrollments. So again, kids left, kids came, but these numbers change even after we're done with the schedule. Despite these fluctuating numbers, we're able to look at historical data and future projections like Brian was mentioning, to meet meaningful projections to best support all of our students. As stated before, the things that have to determine the section numbers are teacher recommendations, student course requests, and the student population. In terms of our scheduling timeline, we're very early in the process at VHS. Teachers have just begun recommending students for next year. Councils are planning their visits to classrooms next week to talk about the selection process, what the options are, and there'll be some time for questions and answers during those sessions. So the projected enrollment for students for the twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-three school year is similar to this year. It's not that different so far. We expect to welcome about nine hundred fifty-eight students to be addressed this coming September. In order to support these students, we anticipate an increase of two point eight FTE. So you've read from our future last board meeting about the two new courses we're proposing, Greek Latin roots and animation. We hope the students are are as excited as you all were when they proposed it. So based on that, if there if there is a student course request and it demands a need, we anticipate a contingency increase of one point one FTE for language or Greek and Latin, point one FTE for art. And then based on some new student enrollment we've seen this year, we we anticipate a point two increase in FTE in English as a new language. We've had a lot of kids um needing the support. In addition to all of this data, we also look at teacher schedules currently, and based on that, we're planning for an increase of point four FTE as a blanket to make the the teacher schedules flexible so we can respond to the influx of enrollment data we discussed before. Teachers have been integral in supporting our students, but so have teacher aides. We remain open. We kept our students safe because of because of teacher aides. But this past year has been pretty difficult to find qualified candidates, so we've had to be really creative in our scheduling to support our our students. So the hope is by adding a a full-time teacher aide next year will provide us with a consistent model of support for all of our students. So you will see an overall increase of two point eight FTE, um, which also includes a council position. You'll learn more about that later on in the presentation.
Thanks, Mary Rose, and and thank you to all of you for presenting that so clearly. It it's so helpful to kind of put your spin on what it looks like in your school and to understand the impact. I think specifically as it relates to scheduling and and how we try to work within the confines that we have available to us. Just want to go back and and highlight a couple of areas in each of them. You'll notice there's a a few marked um it areas that we didn't talk in great detail, and I thought I would bring a little color to today. So at the two elementary schools, you see, um, there's a, right now, as I start to put a budget number together, what we are embedding is a one point O contingency special ed teacher across the avenues, for a lack of a better word right now. We don't yet know whether it will be needed at either school or whether it will be needed solely at one, or whether it will be a full-time position or part-time position. But because we are in the midst of our special education CSE season, the the outcomes of those meetings and in the committee work that is done will necessitate some increases possible. And and so we want to be able to have that flexibility right now to ensure that uh some of the areas where we think we are probably projecting towards are are properly accounted for. Like additionally, you'll see under clerical staff, our our nurses are in our clerical unit. Right now, we have two nurses at the high school. We have two full-time nurses at the elementary school, one at each, and then we have a part-time floating nurse between the two elementary schools. This year has been really challenging, as as we all know. There's been some significant uptick in terms of the level of communication as it relates to our nursing staff, communication with families. And and there seems to also just be a a general need that has shown an increase over time. It's been expressed to us by the nurses. We've talked to them in in great detail. We are looking at at short-term solutions as well as long-term. So the contingency that you see built in there right now is a contingency to bring the full-time, sorry, the part-time position that currently exists between the two elementary schools uh to a full-time position. And we we can speak about that a little bit more when we dive deeper into the the budget in the budget work session. But one of the areas where we see that that could be beneficial to us is that we do employ temporary substitute nurses at times to cover in different places. And this may provide an additional opportunity for us to utilize our own staff to do that, which can be an economical approach to us addressing the needs when when we are short-staffed on any given day. The the last thing I think Mary Rose outlined really clearly here, those those contingencies that we see highlighted there are their scheduling contingencies, right? It is all about, we don't know yet at this point, and being sure that we can cover our needs based on the flux, the ever-changing enrollment data that we do see at the high school. Mary Rose indicated that you see an additional counselor there listed that we're going to talk about in greater detail. Victoria and I kind of um look at the district-wide positions that that we are looking to add an increase to. I wanted to identify those other ones as contingencies, their budgetary needs to really address kind of where we where we are to support us, and then the other being additions as kind of a a different area of approach. Before we go any further and and take a look at um the the bigger picture and some of those, are there any questions you have specific to those three schools? Or that idea of those contingencies that I just spoke of?
I just have a a question about the fifth grade, which is clearly somewhat of an anomaly in the last time I remember a class being that anomalous, I think, is the class of twenty ten. Is, do we, do we have an understanding as to what that's about, or is it, is it just an anomaly?
But I think it's a great question. So why don't I jump ahead one side, we'll come back to the questions, because I think, you know, I, as we think about the theme I've I've tried to carry forward in each of these, is talk about what do we know? What what impacts can we um address and which do we not at this point? So what we certainly know is enrollment drives staffing. As I said earlier, staffing represents our largest cost. So historically, if you go back over the last ten years, our staffing costs, salaries, and the associated benefits have accounted for between seventy-five and eighty percent of the total budget. If I took a snapshot right now of where we are, I believe it's close to seventy-eight percent for next year, is what I am anticipating, which is on target with where we have been. That large fifth-grade cohort is is one of the things that we know is a known impact, and I spoke a little bit about this last year. Large groups have carrying costs more so than just the staffing associated with them. As they work their way through, there's curricular needs, textbooks, subscriptions, often lately, we moved to online subscriptions for many things, supplies and materials that that carry up with them. So if they haven't yet hit a grade that's been that large, there's a demand or an increase for textbooks to support that as well, and we will see that continue on. We're anticipating a hundred and eighty right now, based off of that cohort survival rate analysis in fifth grade. I don't know if it is the largest. I think we had one larger at that point. But it is, I think, statistically significantly higher than what we would say are all of our averages are. And and it does, it will have an effect in subsequent years at the junior, senior high school as well as as we work its way through. And I'll take just one more here. So the unknown things, I think, at this point, obviously, was spoken about kindergarten registration. This one, I I, uh, when we look at our modeling, it's the one you can have the least tape in. Right now, the projection is one hundred. That's that's probably lower than where we will be. I think that there's some anecdotal evidence to suggest that there were a lot of home sales in the last year and a half that uh will likely start to increase our kindergarten population. And so my guess is that that number is a a very low-end estimate. And I think as the elementary assistant principal spoke, I would, our best anticipation is probably seven sections across the district, as that has been fairly consistent. Obviously, as Mary Rose spoke about the the high school course recommendations, we we just don't know yet. We're so too early in that process, but we believe that what was presented um on their slide does provide the flexibility to support that. And then, as I spoke of earlier, the CSE uh process is ongoing for special education placements, and those in-district placements are are yet to be resolved. That could mean um programmatic decisions. It could mean supports. So there's a lot of different areas that that come to us in terms of the financial impact associated with that. Then I'll go back to the question. Sorry, I thought that that fifth grade one made sense to talk about then.
So what happens, you know, you're so used to seeing this number increase every year on the staffing side, but I'm not used to seeing the decline in the whole, sorry. But I think just for the budget or maybe for the future, we think it would be good to have the staffing along with the production so we can get some perspective because I think you move things around, you know, you just look at the base number, your number's going to have actually gone down, and you're looking at twenty-one, twenty-two numbers compared to what you did last year. Maybe you move some Aids and your teacher went down, so you just have a holistic perspective. It would be good to have a staffing number, the way you want to go.
Thinking like a ten, like ten-year longitude and all the way that enrollment is. And I think what a great point, and now I'll go get you one second. One of the, um, as I look at Greenville, I'll use as an example. Like, in order to make the the accurate comparison is also difficult as well because what we budgeted for last year may be different from than what actually is in there. So the budget may actually be no different, even though we're re- recognizing an increase of one and a half aides here. It's, it's what we actually staffed is different than what we may have budgeted for, and so we may not have actually increased anything. Perfect, exactly right. So each year, it's going to shift. And I and I would agree, I think, you know, the comparison for me to look at with the um the budget is what's the expenditure? So to track expenditures over those times, so if we did realize staffing over time to the to the proposal.
Predicting enrollment is really hard, and I think, you know, Brian, this is what you're doing is probably the best we can do with the information we have available to us. But there are a couple things that you, Brian is actually sort of alluded to, if I mentioned kindergarten, there are a couple things that could change, could change. If you blow any of this out of the water, it makes the rest of this almost irrelevant. Biggest one is turnover. How quickly do the empty nesters who no longer have kids in school turn over and be replaced by families coming in with with kids? Occasionally, you get the ones who we were sort of a no. We moved here a year before our daughter was born in anticipation, but typically, it it happens a little later in the process. If that turnover rate were to accelerate, that can feed a lot of kids in in a hurry and don't even necessarily know where they're going to come in. They tend to come in at the younger ages, because students could have a couple younger ones in the night. And the other thing that, again, could change, probably not as drastically, is family density. Are they moving in with one child, or are they moving in with three children? But that sort of changes from what typically happens. That can also move the numbers a hurt. So there's not really much to be done with that, because we can't control it and react to it. Happens, but it does make the process that much harder to go hit the numbers.
Can I just make a read on nature point to be point to tell you this? So, I think numbers are kind of flexible. I think the good part about, you know, what I think about it, the numbers have not gone up. It actually gives a lot of creativity in our new CapEx that we are trying to plan because we can have more kind of more creative planning of what we want the schools, what a mission are and what a value system you want to be. And then just have more creativity in our planning as we start to be getting the more the
Yeah, I I wholeheartedly agree. We we've spoken um with the administrative teams as we've been Yeah, I, I wholeheartedly agree. We've spoken with the administrative teams as we've been looking at bond and construction and architectural plans, and I think this is, it's, we welcome everybody to the district, but it's good news when we're not rapidly rising at a rate that we don't think will be sustainable by our, our plans to acquire more space. And I do think that that is, I, I hope that those projections hold at least somewhat true in the long term for us in that way. Okay, to move on, Judy. I'll pass it to Victoria.
Great. Actually, sorry to interrupt. Can I just ask one? No, it's not asked a question. I think one of the other things that might be really helpful, I always find it's tough to, you know, especially when you look at those kind of teacher-student ratios, it's kind of tough to understand the ups and downs of the, the special education component of education, which I think is part of the driver of some of those small class or teacher ratios. And so one of the things that might be helpful is to break out the teachers between general teachers and special teachers in terms of that list, and maybe even on the aides. General aides versus, meaning my classroom aides versus specially, which are either dedicated to individual, individual students or a cup for a few different students. Just because I think that it's really, it's helpful to kind of watch some of those trends separately and to just understand both, you know, the size of special in our, in our district, which I think is fairly significant and, and and to be able to kind of look at it from that perspective.
I think that's an excellent recommendation. I think we can prepare something like that for the budget work session. It'd be really helpful.
So I was really impressed at Malasch making the connection to the district goal and asking. So now I'm going to make the, the connection of the, of the district goal to some of our proposed staffing increases and also to the, to the budget in general. And it really is about the experience we have been having about our rapidly changing world, right? We always spoke about a rapidly changing world, and now that we are living it more specifically, I think it really has meaning in terms of the needs of the students, and we started the school year looking at the social emotional needs of the students, how we can transition back. And I think you will see that the staffing does, does connect. So as of now, all three district committees have met the, on, on each of the components and have created action plans, which we will be presenting to the board at a later meeting. But I did want to make that connection because that timing, at least having those action plans, has given us an opportunity through the whole process, and all the administrators have been involved on three different committees, as well as many of you, to know kind of where those action plans are headed. And I did want to just talk about some of the language and kind of what that is leading us to, and the language comes from the culturally responsive sustaining framework from the state of New York. And that is, we're, we're looking at that welcoming and affirming environment, the high expectations and rigorous instruction that is the connecting learning to life, the inclusive curriculum and assessments, and also the ongoing professional learning. And, and the other thing to remember throughout all of these discussions is we're talking about every child. We're talking about all children. We want that high expectations and rigorous instruction for all students, the inclusive curriculum and assessments for all students, and that does take different types of learning. And I think as you hear about some, some of our proposed staffing changes, you'll see that connection. So the first one is about teaching and learning, and our recommendation is for a teacher resource specialist at the junior, senior high school, and we're going to be kind of tag-teaming a discussion of these proposed positions that I believe we're beginning with Michael Curtin and Kyle or Mike Kirst. Thanks.
Good evening, everyone. So the expectations for secondary educational outcomes are changing in our country and in our state. In addition to the traditional four years of history, four years of math, reading, writing, and arithmetic, we're expected to support students' social emotional learning, engage them in civic participation, teach them with and about technology, support twenty-first century skills development, and so on, and so on. Two, the research on how to deliver effective instruction for all students continues to evolve. So we want to support our secondary teachers in keeping up with all of this change by providing them with regular opportunities to reflect upon and improve their practice as educators. Specifically, we want to hire a teacher resource specialist, also known as an instructional coach, to engage the EHS teachers in a cyclical coaching program focused on pedagogy, one that transcends different content areas and could be useful to teachers in all of the disciplines. The elementary teachers currently receive this kind of support from the reading and math teachers and through interactions with outside consultants, such as Shelley Klein and East West Math. At EHS, we really don't have an analog to those reading and math teachers, and we've had less success bringing outside consultants in who sometimes fail to understand and appreciate Edgemont's unique culture. For these reasons, we feel that an on-staffed teacher resource specialist would be the most effective way to provide ongoing individualized learning and support for our EHS teachers. This person would engage all of the teachers in regularly scheduled coaching sessions where they visit the teacher's class and then work with them to identify new and different instructional strategies to add to their repertoire. An added benefit is that having a central point person focused on instruction will help to build more consistency in the approach and the expectations across classrooms. So I now am going to turn it over to Kyle, who's going to talk about another position that we hope to include in the budget proposal. All right, thank you.
I, again, I'd like to speak briefly about the addition of a counselor at the junior, senior high school. And I'd like to start with asking two rhetorical questions. We want our students to have greater access to mental health support. Would students benefit from spending more time with their counselor to discuss the challenges of the phase of the high school level and to talk about the post-high school plans, including the support with the college application process? As I stand here for four years, hard to imagine answering no to those two questions. Our student population has grown. The number of counselors at the junior, senior high schools has remained unchanged over the last twenty years. When compared to local Westchester schools, Edgemont counselors have greater overall caseloads for high school grade. That means that each year, our counselors work with more seniors than other counselors do at local year schools. On average, seniors are applying to more schools than they did fifteen, twenty years ago. Counselors provide individual support to each of our seniors through essay feedback, mock interviews, assistance with Naviance in the financial aid process, determine a balanced list of colleges for each student, and helping seniors to navigate various applications and admission boards. Additionally, over ninety percent of seniors now apply for early decision to colleges, which greatly reduced the application window. Counselors need regularly to students to provide mental health support, a support that is essential to meet the social emotional needs of our students. By hiring an additional counselor at the junior, senior high school, our counseling department will be able to expand critical support needed by our students in that. Thank you.
Since I started my role July, a criminal analysis of the roles and responsibilities of the people-personal leadership was conducted with our special education consultant, Dr. Roberta Lee. Under the current structure, the director and assistant director, PPS, spend a significant amount of time chairing committee and special education meetings, determining eligibility for special education services, media, preschool special education, initial section five and four meetings, writing and revising and visualizing education plans, which are all important facets of our role, but also reduce the time spent on proactive special education programming for students educated in district and out of district programs. In order to promote a more efficient special education support for students with disabilities and those that risk for social, emotional, mental health difficulties, we are proposing creating a role, district-wide CSC and CPSC coordinator. Responsibilities would include chairing these meetings and supporting special education teachers and providers in order to increase student achievement, social emotional, and behavioral support for students. Compared data to special education leaderships from other districts of similar size reveals roles such as to CSC chairperson, CSC chairperson, administrative managers, these managers, special education supervisors, in addition to director and assistant director of people-personal services. And focusing on the human capital, this strategy would allow the director and assistant director to focus on systemic practices as it relates to special education, be proactive in programming aids, and professional development, latest research as it relates to special education.
Fred, do you want to add any color to any of those three? I think we should actually take those three as one chunk and speak a little bit about the financial impact associated with those, and then talk separately about the fourth.
So as I think about all of them, I think about a more proactive approach. You know, we often joke about getting lost in the weeds, or, or where are we spending our time? And we certainly learned that with COVID and, and how, how much we've been striving to get out of COVID and get back to the job of educating. But as, as I think about the, the needs that have evolved, and as we look at other districts and we look at programs, we look at, well, how are they able to do that, right? And they're, they're able to do that because they do have people in place to look at the more programmatic level, to be looking at how we can shift where we spend money by paying attention to consistency and systemic practices. So I, I think about that as we look at, as, as Mike said, people we brought in and, and, and building relationships with staff. You learn when, when you're able to take risks and you're able to take that step and build that relationship with someone who's working with you on a non-judgmental level, a non-evaluative level. And, and I, I think that's what certainly that the, from the teaching and learning perspective and the people-personal services perspective is more of a proactive systemic consistency look at the district. And the counseling, of course, and all, all of, all of the pieces, as I, as I think about the social emotional context and, and back to the making sure that every student has that opportunity to engage in that, the high expectations and rigorous instruction.
Judy, do you want to, I'm wondering, do we want to separate the why, right, the rationale from tying some budgetary aspects to those three, or do you want me to present that first and then come back?
I, I think we can just go ahead with.
Okay, so I think reason we're separating those three from the last one there, I think all three of those are, are, we are concerned to be like teaching positions right now. So obviously, a counselor falls under the teacher's contract. The way we're envisioning the other two roles, the, the PPS role and the teaching and learning role, is a teacher on special assignment under the teaching contract. So the, the terms of the costs associated with that are, are fairly easy to project and calculate based on the, the contracts that we have currently. When we make anticipations for an increase in staffing, we have to consider what are we replacing? And that ultimately leads to what the number becomes. Conservatively, what we are, are using this year as our number for new staff is a new teacher hired at master's step fifteen. Sorry, masters plus fifteen, step four, as kind of a baseline from a typical area where we would be looking at, at that point in time. That factoring in then health benefits, fringe benefits, all the other areas that we do need to contribute to does add a lot to it, as we've spoken many times over the years. So factoring in a two-person health plan and all the other parts, each of those position comes out to about a hundred and thirty thousand dollars addition to the budget from last year on a year-over-year basis. Now that's, I should also say, it may not be that, you know, in those positions that that is the salary associated with that person, but it may be that there's an internal move of a person, and the position itself costs more than that, but their replacement costs less than that. So that's the, the net increase that one might be able to assume on that. And then I think the fourth one there is a little, aside from a little bit different, and it's an area that, that we've had at least some personal conversations with over time. It's, it's a proposal to add additional staff or to increase the staffing in the business office itself through the hiring of an assistant business official. Right now, we have a structure in place where we have a district treasurer who's a part-time role. It's a point-six FTE, as we spoke of earlier, which means it's three out of five days in the cycle. When I think about the, the why, the strongest area, aside from the day-to-day, just workload that, that exists in the office, really relates to our upcoming capital project. We have a significant amount of work that will be coming to us above and beyond what is normally occurring as we manage that project over the next many years. State filing, ensuring that we have accurate records up to the state to be able to progress. The final cost reports associated with each of the projects, the management of a, a number of different construction aspects going on at time, the capital project tracking associated with that, the auditing that will be coming as, as a part of that to ensure compliance. That work is all work that does not currently exist, and will be a straight addition in the next couple of years. In addition to that, and, and I'll, I'll try to speak vague about it now, and I think it will come a little bit more clear later in the, the presentation tonight or in our agenda tonight. Some structural staffing changes that are, that are upcoming in the district lead us to believe that we will need additional business support for facilities. As, as right now, we're able to manage much of that with the staff that we have, and, and I don't necessarily believe that that will be the case moving forward. Those are two areas that really stand out that are, that are going to be significant increases. But I think, aside from that, on the more general approach, we would really like to be able to take a more transformative role. I would like to go take a more transformative role in the business office and at the district level. And by providing additional support with an assistant business official, we can move some of the technical aspects on that will allow for some more sharing of our roles, as we have tag-teamed a lot of this over the last year, particularly with team of resources and, and other aspects that are directly related to business in, in a tangential way. The costs associated with that are a little bit less because we have a position. It's not a, it's, it's a reimagining of the position and an inclusion of the current treasurer's roles into this, this duty. And so right now, factoring in additional benefits and salaries, we can anticipate the cost to be approximately ninety thousand dollars above what it would be this year to increase that to a full-time position in time. Anything else that you would want to add to that, Victoria?
No, Brian, I thought you described it perfectly in terms of the increases we're expecting, and this has been a position that the board has been aware of, that we've discussed, so we wanted to memorialize it and get that proposal in.
Brian clarified for me the one question that I had developing is, we started to speak, eventually you got there, which is when the capital project is completed, it's, you make clear that there is more than sufficient work to keep this person's playful.
Yeah, I think if I would reflect on the mentorship of Sue over, over the last year and a half, two years, which talks about, a lot about the change in this position, the requirements, the state mandated requirements over a number of years. We look at the mandated reporting that occurs, the mandated audits that occur every year. Those alone are, are significant. It take a ton of time, are very technical in, in approach, and, and would be really absolutely be supported by, this role would help really support that aspect as well.
Any questions from any other board members, including Maritita?
I don't have any questions, but I have a comment. We are really in a very influential time, and I am thought of a big jump. The wages also happening for the next two years and we're looking at all this staffing increase. This is a comment I am looking forward to the budget. On how you're going to tie this up for the, so it's not very demanding on the tax increase for the community. And I just believe that spirit that, you know, numbers increasing and wages increasing and all of the kind of, was I to face with it. So I look forward to that session.
Sort of mentioned, I mean, again, given conversations you've had in the past, I presume that this would help you look at changing the way things are done to make them much more efficient and cost-effective. And while it may not reduce, say, staff, it might allow us to take on more things without having to add additional staff later. Some of these things that came on, first our traditional scale, just moving, adding people to try and deal with it without restructuring.
Yeah, that's correct. And I do think one thing that hits all four of these is the use of consultants and outsiders to assist us to address some of the areas where we feel like we need additional support right now. I do believe that it's hard to tie out exactly what those savings will be, but I could, we could point to each of these four areas that where additional staff in-house should, if done well, mitigate the need for some of the additional supports that we call on from outside, and that is a, you could take that off in terms of the net expenditure increase that one would expect. I could give an example specifically in the business office. So we do have a number of partnerships that are utilized pretty consistently across all of the districts. One of them is Forecast Five, which is a part of the, that program has helped us with the enrollment trends. There are many levels of the usage of that, and I think that with additional support, we wouldn't need the same level of support from the outside to be able to help us address some of the state reporting needs, and that's a, would be a savings for us.
I'm sorry, just looking at this, you know, the first three, you know, it's very clear the way, always that your resources will benefit our students. The business office, so, you know, a little more tangential, but, you know, particularly having, as I mentioned, some of these people had spoken of employees instead of consultants, that we have more than that, an additional counselor, that's huge. Just, you know, in terms of going forward, the work we're doing with the students.
Great. Yeah, I just, can I just say one more thing, which is that I actually think it really does a great job of helping our teachers focus on teaching and not having to kind of pull them into a lot of these things that are, that are outside of, you know, what they're, where they're focused, where they want their focus to be. So the only question I have is, you know, this is all at the high school level, and I'm wondering if there's anything that, that we're thinking about at the elementary school level to kind of, again, allow our teachers to focus on teaching and give them some, some additional support.
So the CSC and CPSC coordinator would be district-wide, so that would be in all three schools. And also I would say that in terms of the teacher resource specialist, we do already have models in place that have been working at the elementary schools in terms of the way the reading teachers, and we added the math teacher last year at the elementary schools to also not only provide support to individual students, but they also provide support to the teachers and go in and to work with them on strategies. The other thing is Andrea Nash, the technology integration specialist, she does spend more time at the elementary schools and she does spend time in all three schools, but her time has been more at the elementary schools. So the creation of the high school position was to help to balance the support that the elementaries have, but that's not to say that the elementary folks aren't always looking at the needs and how we can best meet them. But I think now there's been so much time that there's more turnkey opportunities able to start happening at the elementaries. I know that we've seen that with the reading teachers and we've also seen it with some classroom teachers at the grade level meetings, and Dr. Curtin would like to add into that as well.
Yeah, I would just say we also took action to address it in the elementary schools a couple of years ago when we added the assistant principal position, but they have been really instrumental in helping and working with teachers and moving the schools forward in terms of construction, where they were really, really being working with. Of that. So it's just different at the high school where it's the principal. So I think that having a teacher resource specialist would really help to address that.
Thanks, Mike.
Thanks.
Just another question. Have you said that we haven't, we haven't added any school const of twenty years?
That's, that's a right.
That's like stunning statement, yeah.
Enrollment's increased and no question the workload per student has also increased drastically. It's gone up at all.
So I thought this next slide, just unless I so appreciate your comments, and I'm eager to also present that budget and share as well as we're getting, we're getting really close, and I think we're getting down to the time. And I can share that, you know, Victoria and I have talked about this and looked at, you know, there are many needs, wants, desires, what bucket we classify them, I think that go beyond what was presented on that slide. I think that we've worked hard to try to parse that list down to the areas that we think will have the greatest impact on students, student achievement, student outcome, student success, student happiness. And it is, it is really the whole system that we want to make sure that we are addressing. And I think we look really carefully today about are we able to say that this is our proposal, and it is. I think that it will, it will fit within a number that we hope will be acceptable and favorable for the board to make a recommendation for. But we'll speak about that, I think, a little bit more detail. I thought that this slide kind of does show a little bit of that, and although we talked about four positions there, some of them were in the teachers' kind of unit, and I think we wanted to look a little bit and break this out in a different way. Instead of looking at like units, think about almost like the roles, like the superintendent's office, the business office, and look at the non-building-based staffing needs in the district. As we spoke previously in the business office, this is looking to increase from a 7.6 full-time equivalent to an 8.0. It's adding an additional point four, not necessarily at the same rates, but it is, that's the staffing increase. It's not a full increase. The same is true in people personnel services, although we are requesting increase of 1.0 to a new position with our transitions that we've had in this last year and with clerical staff and to get going with our, sorry, in order to have a solidified clerical staff and to do the transitions, we have additional clerical right now in the PPS office in that transition. And so the increase is actually only a point six, again, not at the same rate, but the actual staffing is only going up by a total of one in our non-building-based groupings, if we look at it on a. I think, Maritita, I'm so appreciative of your comment in the masking conversation. What are the next steps? Where do we go? We have a lot of board meetings coming in succession. So we've got a meeting next week on Tuesday. We'll be talking, the focus will not necessarily be budget there. The focus is actually from my end of things, it's going to be looking a little bit at bond. A little updates on the bond process, the timeline for construction, where we are with SED review, a little bit of conversation with our architect, who will be present as well to get some insight, to talk about some of the plans that have been ongoing in community discussions as it relates to parking and traffic flow, in particular at Sealy Place. And so we take a little respite from the budget conversations. At the same time, at our last meeting, I promised you two things that I think that we'll hope to be able to address then. Continued conversations about the universal pre-kindergarten program, and there was some questions related to building aid that we hope to address there as well. And Judy, are we okay saying February 28th now? So previously scheduled was March 1st, a Tuesday meeting. We're going to have that meeting on February 28th, which is a Monday. That will be when we make our presentation, the administrative presentation for the budget and our financial projections for next year, and that's followed by the subsequent week, the budget work session, where we'll start to really unpack and also take a deeper dive into special education, athletics, and the co-curricular budgets. And then moving on, as we get ourselves towards the budget vote in May, there's a number of opportunities for the community to continue to engage with us and to ask questions both at our board meetings here and also through other venues that we'll have out there. We will attempt to schedule a PTA meeting as well during the day to help people have an alternate venue to come and ask questions of Victoria and I. And I think, you know, we've reached that point in the year where we turned the corner to February, and I felt like we're going to be at the budget vote really fast. It feels like it accelerates really quickly at this point. We're in a good position to move forward with it.
Brian, thank you very much for that, we had Sue, we go review. And thank you to all of the administrators, those who presented and those who worked in the background who supported. It was really helpful. It's so nice to see everybody. All day, you know, pretty soon we'll get these masks off and it'll be like. But I actually just have a logistical question about the budget work session. And I'm not, I'm throwing this out there as an idea. Feel free to push back, everybody, but is that a meeting that we could have in a, first of all, is it something that ought to be, I'm going to use an old-fashioned word, televised? Or is it really just a work session open to the public? And I ask just for the comfort of us being able to sit in a circle and actually see everybody's face if possible, but there may be good reasons why this request doesn't make sense, but.
Are you requesting in-person or not?
No, in-person, in-person. I'm just, if we don't have to do with, if, I don't, I mean, I understand that having that means that then we need mics and we have to sit in a particular. We can do that. Okay, all right, that's, that's fine.
We can make a larger table.
Okay, I just want to make sure that we'll be able to all see each other. Okay. Someone trying not be able to see over the hour. I'm just going to get a taller seat. I'll sit next to you, Julie, we'll be kind of. It's evident, I'm going to get a taller seat. Alex is going to get a shorter seat. Okay. And with that, we move on to the consent agenda, Victoria. You want to take out G1 perhaps?
Yes, please.
Okay.
You want to do that first?
No, I'd rather not do it.
Well, me too, but.
All right, let's do it first.
Okay, resolve that the Board of Education approves the resignation of John McCabe, Director of Facilities for the purpose of retirement. Mr. McCabe's resignation date and lawful date of work will be June 30th, 2022, and effective retirement date is July 1st, 2022. And I would like to make, well.
I have to get a motion. Alex, and a second, Melash, showcase, Victoria, would you like?
No, no, so I did reluctantly place the resignation of John McCabe on tonight's agenda for board approval. John started in Edgemont as the Director of Facilities on November 4th, 2005, an auspicious date for the Edgemont School community. John is a leader who is an exceptional blend of technical and strategic knowledge and ability, but the special sauce is truly his care and compassion. Maintaining an open campus with 10 separate buildings in the Northeast is quite a challenge. Add on Sealy and Greenville, and you have a picture of John's responsibility. 296,000 square feet of building area and 80 acres of property. You can find him in the boiler room, on the roof, and in the tunnels where our plumbing and electrical conduits run from building to building under the breezeways on the EHS campus. His technical expertise helps to problem solve with his staff and to set direction for scheduled repairs and replacements. The strategic part is supported by John's MBA. In a small school district, John's expertise in business and in both of these areas has certainly helped the Edgemont community as he oversaw bond projects in the past and other large capital projects. John works closely and knows clearly the expectations of the New York State Education Department and what is needed to close out a project. John is available 24/7. I'm reminded of a power outage in the E building one Father's Day weekend when John was called to the district. In John's 16-plus years here, there have been snowstorms, ice storms, found trees, and other acts of nature that require John and his staff to respond immediately. Oftentimes spend the night on chairs here and do all they can to keep school open. John is well-liked and well-respected by his colleagues, and I know we are all touched when John speaks about the members of his custodial staff and Brown's team upon their retirement. Rosemary DeVito recently shared after learning about John's retirement, "It has been a pleasure and an honor to have worked with such a fine gentleman. I've always enjoyed his flawless presentations at board meetings. Only John can talk about building projects and make them interesting. She especially appreciated and enjoyed John's kind and thoughtful words for his custodial team. They are who they are because of John. John, it has been a pleasure and an honor to work with you. We wish only the best for you in retirement and for your time with your family, and hopefully for some travel, and of course uninterrupted Father's Days to come." Thank you so much.
You have a comment as well from Sue Shirkin, who worked so closely with John over the years. When she had heard about this, she had asked if I could at least say something on her behalf for John. And John, I know you're out there listening. I echo everything Victoria said. I'm so appreciative of all the roles that you have played along the way, and certainly for the care with which that you provide that and the patience that you have for all of us as we often intervene into your world and need your support, and you've just always been so patient with us, and I'm very appreciative of that. Here's what Sue had to say. She says, "I remember the day that I first met John McCabe, Nancy Tadigan, our former superintendent, and I interviewed him for the Director of Facilities position. I've heard this story, by the way, a number of times. To say that he made a great first impression would be a gross understatement. We spoke with him for about 30 minutes, and as we walked back to our offices, I looked at Nancy and said, 'We don't need to interview anyone else.' We knew immediately that he was the right person for Edgemont, and it became even clearer when we interviewed the remaining candidates. John never let us down. He was a consummate professional, and it's because of him that the district has made progress in improving and maintaining our facilities. It was always an ongoing project and always an area to improve upon for students and staff. On a personal level, it's been a privilege and a pleasure to call my friend, a trustworthy confidant, always patient and always caring. I'm most grateful that our paths in life intersected at Edgemont, and I wish you the most immense happiness and success in your next endeavors."
With that, I ask for a vote. Maritita?
Hi.
With you, congratulations, John. Thank you for everything that you have done and are doing. The remainder.
Yes, I would like to ask the board's approval of G personnel. Numbers two through 16, eight students, number one. I business, numbers one through eight.
Is there a motion? Okay, Gloria first, Jennifer second, all in favor?
I.
And I think Brian already went over the schedule of meetings. We have February 28th, March, the budget work section. Oh, yeah, February 15th first, let's start with that. And we'll stop there. For now, that's enough. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Monica. Alex, I guess we didn't need it, but we're adjourned.